Oh, yeah.
Sorry I injured us. I moved over there.
Recording in progress.
Line call me in order. Please rise for the flag allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready? A lot of that's tied on the pool of the agenda.
So.
As motion is formed to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call to the public. Okay, go ahead.
Just for something on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Or just stuff on the agenda?
Yeah, this is stuff on the agenda.
For on the agenda?
The things that are on the agenda.
We're just gonna work on master plan right now, so, other than that, I just don't have any to add. I'll wait till later.
Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Call the public. Things on the agenda.
So, the Michigan marijuana medical act that is on agenda later?
Correct.
And I, so, I did email you, but I wasn't sure if you're just gonna discuss maybe what can be done in tightening up ordinance, et cetera?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I speak on that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so some of the things that we learned, or maybe some of you watched the last board meeting, when Bob Buzat, our Senator, Shor, or...
Representative.
Representative, sorry, showed up, and he actually brought a lawyer with him, who not only is she a lawyer, she, I believe, has written a lot of legislation around those bills, and very knowledgeable, so, you know, she wasn't picking sides or anything, but she had a lot of information to give. And one of the things that she said absolutely has to be on there, that I've not heard mentioned at the planning commission, is the caregiver has to live on site. Has to. And I don't know what that is, what is around that requirement. What does that mean, that they're there eight hours a day, or they can go on vacation, or do they have to have someone, you know, what is the ruling around that? Another point that she bought up was it's absolutely against the law to sell product. It has to be delivered to patients, and I think we've touched on that before, but that would definitely limit the number of cars that can come and go, so perhaps that could even be something that is put into, what do I want to say, part of the requirements. History shows, though, if you look at these places across the nation, there's traffic day and night, there's a lot of problems with them in every community, it seems. I shouldn't say every, but in many communities. They can input their costs, or the patient can pay them for, or the insurance is paying them, but it has to be done off-site. And again, just mentioning this so that it's just really clear that this is part of the laws. Let's see, what else do I have here? One of the recommendations she had was to read how the city of Warren takes care of it. They keep it all contained outside of the residential area, I believe, but it's all in one place, so the city of Warren might be a good place to look at, for examples. She said that it's quite possible that you can still add stipulations that are over and above the ordinance, and we've been told over and over again that that's not possible. I don't know. She tells me it is. She took me aside after and said it was absolutely, there are things that can be done, so I hope that we're looking into that. And then, I'm really glad that we're looking at the ordinance tonight, because it's obvious that we need to have something like this in place, and what do I want to say, refined, so this doesn't happen again, tighten up the rules. Also, she said, the facility has to be inspected by the state first, so just keep that on the radar first, before any decisions are made here. I would think then that the state would need to look at it. And the caregiver needs to show proof of his car as a caregiver, and of his patients, so it should also be stipulated in there, if this does, you know, go to fruition, that he have a log or something of what's going on. I was really disappointed to hear that the information had been put out, that he had rescinded, or was calling back this proposal, and then a week later says, no, we're on again. I think that that might just be another example of how this guy is saying one thing one day, and another thing the other day, in my personal opinion, but I don't feel like it can be trust. Trusted, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Rich, once again, I just, before I let you go, is I sent you guys, she sent an email with my list of my concerns, so if you guys could reach those over to sign me in.
Looks like there's a hand up on the line. Matt? Go ahead, please.
Just stay FYI, your camera's not up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. There it is.
There we go.
It's on now, thanks.
Thanks, let us all. No house for public comment at this time?
Yeah, CJ Kell, you know, obviously we got a house or two away, against the marijuana thing from A to Z. Denise, that was with Bob Buzat a week or so ago, she's very, very sharp on this, you know, it's what she does, and nothing else. I think we have to include her in making some decisions, because our lawyer, I think he knew what was going on when she was talking, and she was gonna have conversation with him, she said, but, you know, I think, I don't know what the parameters are for bringing somebody in like that on something like this, you know, there's a special use, or whatever, of the public, but we gotta have somebody know what they're doing, so this doesn't happen again. If I can't win this battle now, you know, I'm gonna win it on a bigger front, I'll win the war, but I need your guys' help to do it. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to whole business, item number one, just master plan. These items, so I have, I think this is the latest, that, March 10? Yep. So I don't know if you wanna go through it, kind of how, summary, or?
I'll go through it as chunks, section by section.
Yeah.
And again, this is on the higher length, the longer length of these surveys, so if there are questions that you guys are like, eh, we don't really need that, don't worry about cutting it. If it's something that I think is important, I'll kind of say, have you thought about this? Alright, so the basic information, not a lot of changes there, asking where folks live, and so a lot of these questions too will have logic traps, so question number two won't pop up unless you say, I live in Tyro Township. So there are a couple of those other questions that are here, and three will only pop up if you say you don't live here. Age is the same, gender is the same question, employment status, seven and eight, that's where we kind of did a little wiggle, that's a new wrinkle there. There's been interest in finding out how long folks commute, and there are actually potentially two different questions that you're trying to ask. Where are you going for your job and your employment? Are you all, is everyone going to Fenton, or are people going to Lansing, are they going to Brighton, Detroit, Ann Arbor? Versus how long are you actually spending on the road? And so this question, or these two possible questions popped out of that, I'm not sure if you want both, or either. One thing that I would recommend for eight is adding a, as I was looking at it, I could see someone who works at home being confused by the 10 minutes or less, and adding a question just, I work at home. You guys wanna pause and poke at seven and eight now?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, and seven, like, you know, if someone chooses, they can answer, if not, they can choose not to answer it also, so I guess probably not a good deal. You know, some people might get, you know, like, hey, I wanna know where I'm going, you know? Number eight, I work at Allen thing, could be, I don't know what that would tell us, but I'm just trying to think.
Yeah.
Is this also what it'd help us with, but it certainly is a, in my case, that's where I work, so it's a valid option, eight, for sure.
What would either of these questions really help us with, master plan?
So a lot of this, you know, in general, it would tell us, hey, you know, like, this question number seven, like, if it's Ann Arbor, majority of responses, well, yeah, everyone's using 23, or Fenton, and possibly there's...
You know, the...
General indicator, but it doesn't necessarily give you a specific, you know, answer to something. It's my take on it, is that...
Just add, I work from home, question eight. Right? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Still doesn't cover all the options.
Yeah, there's tons of options.
Yeah, Zach, I don't know in your, in other communities has, had, you know, what type of...
This is a bit weird question. It's far more common to ask, where do you work? Because folks are kind of interested in, you know, they can extrapolate which roads are heavy, and see if it's consistent with ordinance, but in the past, and maybe other places, we have to look.
The one thing it doesn't pull in is, there's three people live in my household, all three of them work, they all three commute, and we're not gonna know that, so, you know, it's, it's only going to go for the person who fills out the survey, I guess is probably the answer there.
So it sounds like we're leaning towards keeping both seven and eight, then? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, and my thoughts for number seven is I wanted to populate that with a list of very likely things, and then allow folks to do another, so...
Well, like, general areas, not specific.
Yeah, so, like, Fenton, Flint, Brighton, what other communities?
Lansing and Detroit.
It's everywhere. It's endless. It is, but in a general sense, if you have those ones, you'll get, hey, where are the main travel routes?
Right.
You're not gonna get that many people commuting to Grand Rapids from here, although...
Be surprised.
Yeah, although you could, right?
Alright. I will make those changes, then. The next big changes then are 10 and 11, we have the option for zero for both of those.
Yep.
And then the, the next real change in this section was the question 13, where we tied specific lot sizes that were consistent with your zoning ordinance. Any other questions, thoughts, or changes for those questions? Alright. Onto housing. No changes in 14, 15, 16, or 17. On question 18, the very last one there, affordable housing, I put a number in, that number, so the way I got that number is I went to the most recent census information and found out the median household income for Tyro Township. I multiplied that by 30%, and that's the general term of art for what affordable housing is. And so when you do that math for the average household, it comes to $1,650 a month in rent, and if you have that much money to spend on a loan, you would qualify for a $265,000 mortgage. There's a lot of fuzziness, you know, depending on your credit score, and how much down positive that is.
Well, yeah, but at least it defines what that...
Yep. That was the, the big change on there. Any questions related to that, or any of the other in that section?
Yeah, that and the entrance patches.
Alright. For non-residential questions, the big change here came in question 23. Mr. Nicholson provided me some samples for each of those that he thought would be relatable for folks in the township. So the question before you here today is, do you think those are relatable? So if you close your eyes, when I say large retail, do you think Walmart, Lowe's, Kroger? And the second question is, are there any of those categories where you don't think it adds value to have the examples there?
You don't know how many examples on the question there?
Yep.
No, definitely, I think it adds value, 'cause... Seems pretty descriptive, right? And it's, makes it clear, right, what we're, what we're asking, as far as all that.
Alright, that was the real good change from the last version. To public services, no big changes in here. I do want to pose again the potential for, I'm gonna pick on question 26. As I mentioned last time, it is difficult for folks who aren't familiar with firefighting services or police services to give an example, or give a description of what they think, so it's kind of a right direction, wrong direction of question. The other approach that some communities will use is to measure against expectations, so instead of saying, how do you rate it? It would be, how satisfied are you with the current fire services? Very satisfied, satisfied, not satisfied, very unsatisfied. I don't know that it matters greatly in this, if you had a room full of statisticians who do survey stuff, it'd probably make for a lot of the conversation, but I'm not sure how different the information guidance you get would be from that.
This question could be, no matter how you phrase it, everyone's gonna have a different... It's great to tell you, you know, something's wrong, but in our experience, it's been good, but...
And a reminder for those folks, the folks who have interactions generally have very high ratings for fire and rescue, mixed for police, and much lower for code enforcement. It doesn't mean that your code enforcement team isn't doing good, it's just the nature of code enforcement that you make both parties upset with you at the same time.
One of the problems that we face in this township is, because we're so close to Genesee County, when you dial 911, you go to Genesee County, and they have to transfer you to Livingston County. So, that gets interesting sometimes, especially in a fire situation, because I, we've had it happen twice in our subdivision, and there's no way to do anything about that, that's just the way it works. And the same thing here, you dial 911 right here, you will get Genesee County.
As a location.
As a location.
I actually went straight to Livingston today, this morning with that explosion going off.
Yeah.
Yeah, they put me right to Livingston.
Did they? Did you look out?
Yeah, I mean, right when it hit, like, as my house shook, I called 911, I was like, that's not right, something, something's not good right now. I went straight to Livingston, they were already clear phone was blown up, so, I don't know, are you north?
I'm, yeah, I'm north of here.
'Cause I'm right, I mean, I'm right here down Hartland Road, so I didn't know if, maybe there's like a car up there, you know, maybe they, there's that break, I don't know.
The closest cell tower, probably?
Yeah, well, yeah, that, and the fact that this is Fenton Township, fire, yeah, city of Fenton, so you run into that, that issue too. But that's, that's part of the, one of the problems that you run into, and it's unique to this area in the north end of the township.
Alright. We did add question 36 for waste collection. We had the description, just so folks have the understanding of current circumstances, and then to gauge support for different options, the first one is, leave it as it is, you contract to someone. Second is the township would contract basically with this provider, a service provider, that would be the only one who could do it in the township, but everyone would then individually contact them, so like, if you don't, if you don't need it, if you don't get it. The third option there, it's more common in cities where there's a service provider, and the township collects an assessment or a fee, or something can pay it directly to the company. That's my best stab at the discussion we had last time. Any thoughts, direction, additional ideas?
It accurately reflects what options there are, right? I don't think, bless them, still a lot of other options now, I'm not aware of that certain communities do, right? They do open it now, or they have it.
Alright. Next, circulation and transportation, and this was the question where we had traffic loads, and Mr. Ward brought up the, I'm an engineer, loads is actually weight in my brain, so instead of traffic loads, went with demand, was kind of a metric of, you know, how much road system do you need? And put that in various places. I do have one polishing question. Do you think folks will understand non-organized transportation system means pathways, or should we just do pathways? That's, that's a fun thing, every community has a slightly different recognizable term. In Oakland County, it's a safety path, everywhere it's a safety path, because apparently the guy back in the day who was the champion for it pointed out that, if this thing's six feet wide, you can have two bicycles going past each other, and it's safe, and it's stuck. So I'll make that change in other places.
Jim, do you, you really think we're gonna get an excellent on anything for roads?
Probably not.
Strongly agrees, I've made you something, but how would you describe the following roads in the township? There's probably four, and I don't know.
I like them, as bad as they can get, I like them.
There may be some subdivision roads.
I just, you know, I'd be facetious, of course, but I mean, you know, the... Fact of the matter is that people will answer, I guess, their, for most, for the most part, they're gonna say four, and that's not necessarily because they, they don't drive all over the place, but, you know, roads in general are not in good shape, period.
The second thing I thought of today, when I heard the news of your adventure, was, oh my god, that's a lot of traffic going down Royal Lake Road. Is there gonna be any asphalt left after that?
Well, it's, it's really old 23 that got, and that one's still stopped, that you cannot go down all the way, old 23.
Yeah, well, it's, it's all the truck traffic that diverted it, this time of year with the frost coming off. Actually, the very first video I saw was from, you know, the copters that showed all the trucks stacked up.
Was that, I don't think the road got hurt from one of the pictures, someone said the road got pulled up, I think just, that dirt was all the way across the, 'cause I got on the highway, and that dirt was all over the highway. I don't think it hurt the road, I just think it was all...
No, but they do have the road blacked out.
I'm more concerned about the steward lines. There was a pretty cold road there.
I think that's good though, Zach, you know, it's a, we might get, I think we know the answer, whatever they'll say, but we'll see what...
Well, and that's, that is a question where you may get different results if you ask satisfied. How satisfied are you versus what condition? So folks may be satisfied with bumpy dirt roads if that keeps development weight. But potato potato sometimes. No other changes in that section? For recreation, questions? I don't see any changes that we've made, and I don't have any chicken scratchings on here.
I'm feeling more, is there, where it says, please specify, that will be like, you can input?
Yeah. Yeah, well, folks will have an option.
Yeah, that's what that means, where it says that.
Alright, for communications, we cut a couple of communications out of there, based on guidance from the discussion last week. The next big thing, the quality of life questions, we added number 54, which is this, why do you live here? And I used a bunch of items that many other communities use, some tailoring to here, and so thoughts on that? Anything you think we ought to strike, or anything you think is important to add?
The only thing I, everyone else, please speak up, I don't wanna make just what my thoughts are, but that you're highlighting there at the bottom, I think this question fits better at the beginning of the survey, but that's just my opinion, but I don't know, chat.
People may not be awake by the time they get to question 54.
I think farewell at the beginning.
Alright, I'm hearing to move it to the front, then.
What section are we going?
Yeah, I mean, because that's what we're really interested in, why do you live here?
Yeah, it would go on the first...
I just have one question, 54, probably good.
If you had one question to ask, that would be what you want to know.
Question 14, do you need to begin?
Yeah, up and on the front, demographic area.
I could have taken one more answer and put it in there.
Oh, that's what I was looking at, Zach, is, I don't know, some of these... Some of the proximity ones might be, I was just looking at like, maybe are they redundant, or are they not, but they are, they are clearly separate items, so... But they are, they are clearly separate items, so maybe not.
And that one, I wanted to be delicate to say, you're not in Tyrone Township for the entertainment here.
Yeah, but.
But you can go to whatever's going on in front of you.
Well, I heard, where's your family? I don't know, there are others. Yes, for the, yeah, we do have, taxes. Some of the other, I, I'm just trying, how you phrase it, like, what, you know, the word open space is used in regulation. It's not an accurate way of asking.
For rural areas?
For the, yeah, for like, not very densely populated. Right, how would you phrase it? Some way around it, but how do you put it in one line item? Right, that's very tough.
Population.
Some of these cover some of that, right?
Yeah.
Farmland, or, you know, natural areas, but a natural area can be quite a lot of things, you know. But then some of it, if you ask, you get specific in this, then you're duplicating your question of what type of housing and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and so, this, this is.
Well, if you, if you're looking for something like that, I guess population destiny would.
But the, yeah, or the one thing that. I think is that our current master plan, right, is the rural. The rural, the trade, rural character.
Right.
I believe is what's used often in our current one. Maybe that would.
Yeah.
You know, as far as from, but I don't know.
Tried, I tried to suss that out in, in natural areas and working farmland.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, rural character for everyone is slightly different. For me, it meant dirt roads and propane pigs and no cable.
Got it. But, yeah, it is. But it is, you know, something could, like, just trying to think which one, like, could the lakes, you know, the natural areas and. Bodies of water, right, and, or something like that, and you could combine those.
And there's a bit of a dual nature, where the lake areas are actually more dense than city of Fenton. If you look at square number of people living per acre.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very dense and very not rural. What I would say, some of these I see as kind of providing guidance for, for policy statements. But also, it provides an opportunity to ask follow-up questions at the community workshops. So, that's where it's a lot easier when, when you have the road here, it says rural character. You can say, what's rural character to you? What's rural character to you? And you can show pictures of different things, and that's it. So, I'd say no, that this isn't the last time to get input. It starts the feeding process. Some of them usually ask questions like the low crime rate or public services. I didn't include those on here because they didn't seem to be very important to consciousness. And they have the opportunity to add that on the other. All right, we've gone through it then.
So, have you timed this to see how long it takes someone to get through this?
My quick guess is that the computer's gonna say twenty to twenty-five minutes.
That's what I would guess. I would guess just short of about an hour to get through it.
Yeah. And again, there are ways, like, each section will be its own little thing, and you'll see a progress bar at the bottom, so it won't feel as long. Let's see, I'm gonna do my run-through of the comments and changes. So, question seven, we're gonna populate that with some of the cities, Fenton, Flint, Brighton, Detroit, Lansing, and other. I'm gonna add work at home for number eight as an option. The why do you live here is gonna become question fourteen. A lot of pages without income. We're going to change non-motorized transportation system to pathways. And we leave that as it. All right, we have a survey. So, the next steps will be, well, I don't wanna have to wait for a whole month to get this ready to go out. So, are you comfortable with me getting these edits, conferring them with Terry Erickson and Mr. Nicholson, and then going live with them on the internet, or do you wanna wait the month so that everyone can see it?
I'm fine. I think we should keep going.
Yeah, we've been dragging behind on this. I guess the question is, you know, to ask Terry this, whose approval do we need on this? The boards to go with this survey?
I would believe that to be true, yes.
The board meets a week after next, and so, we still have a board meeting this month.
Okay.
So, if you can get the final, you know, maybe by next Tuesday at the last one, we post the agenda.
Thursday.
Thursday this week? Because the meeting isn't till, what, the twenty-ninth?
Is that or the thirtieth, whatever that last Tuesday, whatever that last Tuesday is.
Yeah, whatever the last.
So, it'll be next week, Thursday.
Next week, Thursday, so if we can get that to raws, we can get it out of the packet and have it part of the agenda.
All right. We'll do that, and then, as that happens, it seems fairly stable. I'm actually, if I have time, I'm gonna enter it into the survey, the actual survey thing. And I can just share with you guys that link, so you can test it online and see if there are any bugs or quirks on it. Before we make it live, we can dump all the information, so feel free to live. Say you wanna live here because it's far away from Mickey Mouse or whatever. It won't go in the final results. All right, thank you.
Before we fold it up on that, have we decided who is going to do that? Has the recommendation come out of here to go to the board, who the survey goes to, and?
So, that's an internal decision. My, so that's where it's a little bit easier, if you created a separate planning commission steering committee, where you can just dump all the decisions to them. So, that's gonna be something for the planning commission township board to sort out. Are we sending it just to the property tax? Are we sending it to property tax and registered voters and sorting those out? My understanding is that the township was gonna take care of the distribution, that we were going, parallel organ was gonna prepare a postcard that can be sent, so it's not the full postage of a letter. But that the township was going to internally sort out which mailing list do we do?
Yep, and in previous meetings that we had, we talked about including calls. And obviously, then, and then we would be able to see, right? And that way, we, to try to get more feedback, right, the surveys to get feedback, it's not to say that. Because a survey answers this, this is what we're gonna do.
Right, yeah, it's a tool.
So, the more people, obviously, there is, there's ideas about it.
Survey's not gonna establish anything other than to give us feedback.
It's a tool. It's a tool that you use to look at.
Yeah, so once you have the survey finalized, then, then it is with the township for distribution. So, that is good. All right, thank you.
Because I just wanna make sure we know what's going up to the board, we gather next. Because the board will also have to vote on that.
And the only other thing, Zach, is in, I think in our last meeting, when we discussed this, we talked about starting to gather and put together data and information in parallel as we're working on this.
Yep.
Sooner than later, I don't know. Don't know if you had any questions or anything on that that you need from us.
Well, it's perhaps an administrative question. We, we had sent the, the kind of the revised fancy, more formal proposal in to Mr. Nicholson. I'm not certain if the township board has taken action. We did have a number, a not-to-exceed number in there. I guess, as the planning commission liaison of the township board, I can give you a call to sort out what you guys are gonna do with that. But, yes, the plan is to do as many things at the same time as possible, so we're not sitting and waiting. Some things have to wait.
Yeah.
But.
But my main point of that is that you're not waiting on us as a planning commission for anything at this moment. That's why I wanna make, make sure we're clear.
Yep.
And I wanna be sure that the stuff that gets carried to the board is everything we need to set everything going. So, approval of the expense, approval of who is going out to, approval of the survey itself. What else? Anything else?
Eventually, the township board's going to decide whether or not it's the approving authority. It doesn't necessarily need to decide that now, but by default, the planning commission is responsible for adopting the master plans. But the legislative body can say, by resolution, we're gonna take this, guys.
Yeah, so you're, you're referring to actually officially documenting it. That is the intent, right? That is the plan, but it needs to be officially documented and so.
No, the, the short-term things that the board would need to do, input in, is if the proposal is good for them. I did add some slack time into the front, so I, some things were happening in March, but I added an extra month because I know how things can take. So, we're not really behind on schedule. We're just coming into it. If they're, who the survey's gonna go out to, those are the big things for the township board right now.
Okay.
So, we need to make a recommendation from our side.
Yep.
As to recommending approval of the, of the proposal as it sits. We're recommending an approval of the survey as it sits. We're recommending the timeline that is in the proposal, so that's, we wanna point that out. It's not just the cost of the proposal, but the timeline that goes along.
And the tasks and deliverables.
Make that as a motion that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. That's fine. So, what I'm, what I'm proposing is that the planning commission approve the survey that goes to the registered voters and all of the property owners in Tyrone Township. That we approve the budget and the proposal and the timeline, so there's four things there. We got all that?
Is there a support for that?
Support there.
Anyone?
Unclear.
Good, all right. All in favor?
We should say that it's amended, amended survey.
Yeah, yeah, as amended.
As amended.
As a record.
In this meeting. Yeah, that's fine.
Are we supposed to make motions at a workshop, though? It's covered on the cross, and he said that.
This is wet.
Am I supposed to make a motion on any business at a workshop?
Well, technically, that's true, but we can, we can pass it on to the board. All right, so, because in, in order for us to, we really had to put that in the agenda that it was, they were going to vote on it.
To keep the timeline intact.
So, basically, what we could say is that the planning commission is supporting those items for board review. So, we won't be passing a motion. We'll simply, we're simply concurring that those items are appropriate for the board to review. So, I'll remove my motion.
Does anybody have any issues with what the recommendation is?
How is this gonna be done?
Yeah, keep it moving.
Yeah, no, but I think it's appropriate.
So, we'll keep it, that will keep it moving.
That way, they know it can be supported, and that's what we want. The other items on the master plan?
So, Libby asked you, Zach, assuming that the board acts on this on the twenty-ninth, what does the timeframe look like for, one, getting the survey out? Two, getting results back? And three, getting the visioning sessions put together? Because I know, I know that you had timeframes listed on there, but.
Yeah, so, the current timeline has the survey being active into May. So, that would be forty-five to sixty days, which my experience has been, if people don't answer it within thirty to forty-five days, they're probably not gonna participate. So, that's still good, and we have visioning sessions on the timelines starting in May. It would probably be better to have them on the backside of the survey closing, because that allows us to use information from that to guide the discussions at that. So, it may be late May or early April, which is pretty consistent with the timeline to start those.
Okay. Early June.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Carrie, you wanna drive my ticket?
Well, that'll give us time to get the information out to the residents and make sure that whoever is interested in participating can participate.
Well, I'm, out of curiosity for my own interest in rescheduling this, how big a percent of the population would you say go south for the winter? Is it?
In this area, maybe ten percent. In this area, maybe ten percent.
Okay.
A lot of people coming back by that alone.
Good question.
And that's just a guess, I'm, I'm kinda doing that based on people that live around me and who I know go to Florida and.
Yeah, that's how I see it.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Then on those, uh, I guess while we're on topic. Uh, how long do you usually, those visioning sessions, how long do they last? When, as we.
So, we can start thinking like when would we schedule those types of things if they would.
Ideally, I'd like to keep them in an hour and a half, two hours. If you get much longer than that, it starts to drag. Uh, and you wanna be respectful of folks' time who've come out and donated part of their life to it, so. You guys do likely have a lot of questions you're gonna be wanting to ask based on previous visiting session, so I, I'd probably put it closer to the two hours.
Yeah, after that, you, uh, you lose interest.
Alright, and. Any other questions? Move on to new business item number one, and this is just a discussion as we look at what we currently have and potentially what we could do to make it more clear, more representative of what the community wants, right? And I think it's important to make sure we stay on with ordinance and what we can or can't do with the ordinance and maybe not so much into our personal, as a planning commission, into our personal position on it per se, but we, there wasn't that many comments about it and a lot of the items that were addressed at the township board, many of them are in our ordinance currently, like there's no onsite transfer, those types of things, but.
Is everybody losing?
Oh, there it goes. Recording is now. I think it's going. Wanted to update software.
A moment or a technical difficulty. Yes. Thank you.
But yeah, so I don't know if you guys had a chance to watch that township board video. Discussion about it, and it was good, good information, but for us, I think what information we've got from our attorney and, you know, reviewing court cases that we can restrict it, right, to zoning districts that aren't residential.
Yeah, I'll do a.
If you wanna go ahead.
Kind of a big overview. So, it is really complex at the state. The first marijuana act was for medical marijuana, there are a couple type of medical marijuana uses. In that case, local units of government had to opt in to certain uses, but there are some uses that said you shall allow. And that was folks who have the card can grow up to twelve plants. Um, and there's something called the registered caregivers. That's for folks who don't wanna grow their own plants, but wanna get the medical marijuana. The original interpretation of that law was that you couldn't put any restrictions on that because the state act said you shall allow. And the, the understanding originally was as long as it's in a secure facility, you're good to go. Uh, and I'll, I'll get back to that. The other state level one is the recreational, and in that one, townships have to opt out. Uh, my understanding is that Tyrone Township has opted out of the recreational side. But folks are still able to grow twelve plants for their own recreational purposes on their property, and that's per property. It's, there's a little bit of contention, the state, the, the medical one says twelve plants per person, but the recreational says twelve per facility, and folks aren't entirely clear which is controlling. Depends which attorney you ask and what day you ask. So, originally, the understanding was that local units of government couldn't restrict anything that the state said you shall allow, including up to seventy-two plants, which a caritator can do for six patients. In your email boxes today was, um, case, uh, Ipsy Township, uh, where it was contrary to that. Another one earlier than that, this is kinda the groundbreaking one, was Byron Township. I forget who it was, DeRouyter versus Byron Township, that's over in Kent County. Um, they limited it to industrial zones. Uh, they didn't want it in, in residential areas, agricultural areas, they said you're, it makes a lot of negative impacts. We're gonna put you with the other noxious uses. And that, the ability of the government to uphold that or to create that regulation was upheld by the courts. And that's what the Ipsy court confirmed. So, your zoning ordinance limiting it as a special land use in several zoning districts was actually ahead of that curve. It was a bit adventurous, you weren't sure if it was legally defensible. These decisions have said that, yes, you can limit it to the zones in the way you have. Um, I will say for communities with industrial areas, my observations and experience have been since the Byron case, they tend to want to limit anything more than twelve plants to those industrial areas. Just cause the impact seemed like a better fit. The other way, I think this was mentioned earlier, is that some communities have said if you're gonna do this in residential, you shall live there. You have to live there, that has to be your primary place of residence, your home set exemption, that's where you live. That's where you're registered, both that type of thing. So, at this time, the community has options to limit it, um, it has to be reusable limitations. So, if you don't have any industrially zoned properties, you can't say you can only do it in industrial zone properties. You have to have places where folks can do it. For the current application, they're entitled to continue to use the zoning ordinance the day it existed when they submitted their application. So, any amendments done through this process won't affect that. An applicant could choose to use a new zoning ordinance if they want to, but it would be all in to the new one. So, this is more of a forward-looking question for you guys if you want to reanalyze where you limit, where you allow these, these uses.
Well, the, the question I have on this is if we limit it to the industrial zoning, we cannot then require that they live in the particular residence.
Correct.
Cause that wouldn't.
It's not.
That would make it impossible.
Yep.
So, you, you pretty much are one way or another, if you limit it to, if you're going to say they have to live in the residence, then you're not going to be limiting it just to industrial areas, correct?
Yeah, well, you can do it, you can do it both ways. So, for example, you could say more than twelve plants is a special land use in the industrial districts. And here are the standards for when it's an industrial district. You could also say in certain, in an ag district or the RE district, it's a special land use, and here are the, the conditions that you have to meet, and one of them is that you shall live there. So, you can, you could allow it in both and kind of fine tune the standards for both of them. I would say also one thing, if you do, um, consider allow, continue to allow it in residential areas or ag areas, that you have a bit more comfort in saying things like it shall be five hundred feet back from a, a not, a residence not on the property. Uh, which again, wasn't entirely clear that you could do when you originally drafted these.
When we originally had just the MMMA, the idea was after the recreational one came in, that there probably wouldn't be a lot of caregiver applications for use. Simply because if you could grow your own, why would you be needing paying caregiver license and stuff to grow just your own? So, I, I know that was a consideration too, as we looked at modifying the, the ordinance that we have. So, um, and I don't know if that's a, if that's a legitimate anticipation or not. It appeared not, since we have a request for a caregiver operation.
And, and one of the other complications is at the state level, plants that were grown for medical had to be sequestered from plants for recreational.
Right.
But when recreational became legal, they realized that there wasn't enough supply for that. So, the state kinda did this, well, you can, you can sell some of the, the medical to recreational processors. So, it, it kinda got mixed in. I will admit, I'm not familiar if they're, they're sequestering them again. But that was, I, I would say one of the reasons why there are a lot of the, the medical caregivers still. Because by law, you're not supposed to make profit from the medical care. It's whatever your costs are, you sell it. How they test for that, I don't know. For recreational, there's no limit on what you can make, so that's, that ability to sell medically grown for, for recreational is definitely good for those folks.
Well, and, and recreational is supposed to not be allowed to sell anyplace, anywhere, anytime, anyway. If you're growing for recreational purposes, correct?
Personally, correct.
Yeah, for your, for a person.
Yep.
But with all the dispensaries talking about, I mean, this, the law is obviously changing so fast. Who knows? I mean, it, it makes no sense to have a caregiver anymore, we can just drive down the street and buy what you wanna buy. So, I don't know why the law is still saying that we have to allow this when I can literally drive twenty minutes down the road and I don't know what the limit is for a person, cause I don't smoke.
And that's what we anticipated when we made the changes to the ordinance that we have now.
Yep.
That there wouldn't be a caregiver need out there, simply because if you grow your own, might go down the street to, to buy some if you can grow it. But again, that's, that's what we're looking at here, is a caregiver situation.
And so, the, the question why it's still allowed or required that it's allowed in state law is Medical Marijuana Act was a ballot measure that was adopted. And any changes to it at the legislative level requires a super majority, I think three-quarters, maybe two-thirds. But it's a really high bar to do any changes to it.
Did you say that our current ordinance requires the caregiver to live on the property?
It does not.
Oh, okay.
It does at the state level.
Well, we should, need to follow that, I would think.
Well, that creates the problem, you couldn't say that you live, if we, if we limited it just to the industrial zoning, you can't say you have to.
That, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
If you look at order, if it's all industrial, that's it, you have to live there, that's, that's impossible. You can't live in industrial.
Right.
Residential.
Residential.
Residential. Zach, in, in this, from a general perspective, as we look at this, obviously, we can work on it, we need to, right, it sounds like. Is there any harm in, in doing this while we have an open application from your experience, Zach?
Not really, because they're, they're entitled to continue to use what they had.
Could they apply?
And often tucked in the back parts of zoning ordinance is a language that you try your best to write, but you don't realize what's gonna happen until you actually road test it. Um, so it's not that uncommon after you've road tested to come back and, and make some changes to it.
Right.
Well, I think going forward, keeping it on the residential makes a lot of sense, so I don't see why we would do that. If you're not allowed to live in anything other than residential district, then.
Right.
We have to follow the state.
Which we can work on and.
Now, I don't know how that works, but I like the idea of restricting as much as we can.
And then, so then if, to do that, we can work on this in the next meeting for sure, but then I have, um, we can read this section here, I'm, I'm showing on the screen, it's twenty-one, one-five-five in our ordinance. If we can all read it and we could. Cause there is items in here that specifically talk about the, the residence or the, those type of things, which in an industrial district, they wouldn't apply, so.
Yep.
We'll need some amending, obviously, we, we can work on that in a future meeting, but there is many different types of items addressed in our current ordinance that are related to a home, right? Which in an industrial district, you wouldn't have a home, so it's gonna take a little.
So, the, the reality is the simplest thing for us to do is simply restrict it to commercial areas.
And I, I'm reticent to just drop sample code from another community, but Oxford Township, where I also do planning for, they went through the same conversation of, they had a couple of pro facilities and coal barns burned down a couple feet from adjacent houses, so they're like, what can we do? And so, they went through the same thing, where now if you're more than twelve plants, you have to be in an industrial district. Um, so there's, um, and I know that that one has been through a ringer on a fellow who's worked for a lot of communities on the stuff, so I can get that to Mr. Nicholson to distribute.
Yeah, cause, cause I mean, realistically, our interest in being cutting edge is not wanting to end up going through a lot of court cases and spending a lot of time and, and money to defend our position if something has already been built for that. You know, that, that's the least, or the, the way of least resistance here and probably supports what most of us are considering.
Yeah, it sounds like people are already in front of us anyways.
Yeah.
So, I, I think the idea of restricting to, I'm in favor of restricting it to industrial only.
I, I, I second that, by all means. But I, I guess one of the questions that I brought up at, at the last meeting was, how do we not take any applications until we get our ordinance where we need it? Cause that's what happened in Rose Township, for six months, they said, okay, for six months, we're not taking a new application. That way somebody doesn't sneak in another application. And now we got more people growing in residential areas, we're, oh, until the, until the ordinance is voted on and passed, we're not taking another one.
They, they can do that. But the, the way Zach, the board would have to do that, I think we can.
We need to get a recommendation by the board to do that.
Yeah, well, and Chuck would have to, the, our attorney would have to, um, in essence, put that together.
Yeah, so that's, the fancy term for that is a moratorium. It comes in all flavors, like a moratorium against enforcing something or accepting applications. Uh, unfortunately, in Michigan, we don't have clear guidance from the state on how to do moratoriums. Um, other states in New England have very clear guidelines of you do this, 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 and you can do a moratorium. My, when I've worked with communities and developed the actual language in their zoning ordinance, the guidance I got from the attorneys are you have to be very specific about the thing that you're doing the moratorium on, so. Applications for new home care marijuana facilities, you have to say why you're doing it, and in this case, it would be because we're revising our standards to be more consistent with, uh, the community desires and the character of the area, and you have to have it for a limited period of time. And because in Michigan, we don't have clear guidance about this, what most attorneys that I've talked to about this have said, you want that period to be shorter than when they can get their day in court because there's been a wait for the moratorium to wind down. Uh, so that, a hundred and eighty days is generally what I've heard, half a year, is where most attorneys that I've talked to are comfortable with.
I think we should send that to the board.
Yeah, so what we could, we could do is, is make sure it's on the agenda for the next regular meeting, right? We can do that up the board. No, for our regular meeting, so that way we can lower on his recommendation, because we need to, as Kurt mentioned, and I believe Ross, he asked our attorney about it already, so they started this conversation, you know, the final determination on the.
Can we give more, you know, can make the moratorium going while we're working on it?
Yep, so that's one of the reasons you wanna do a moratorium, is if case law changes or something happens, is we, we don't wanna. is we, we don't want to work on this until we've got the table set. And so knowing that you're going to want to work on this would be another valid reason for delaying any more applications.
So could we then ask the board to implement or start the moratorium while we work on this?
I think we can ask Ross to get ahold of Chuck. And because what we asked Russ to do the last time was to review the options, because there's no point in having a moratorium unless we knew whether the options would be viable. So we know the options are viable. Now, the next point to do then is to ask Chuck, is it feasible for us to establish a moratorium with a, a hundred and eighty day limit until the ordinance is modified and amended?
Yeah, I would check with Ross. He may have asked, because we had, we did discuss it in the last meeting, but not to this degree.
Well, yeah, because we wanted to get, there was no point in getting a moratorium, but we couldn't do.
Something came through, something from Chuck that came through, that was where mine had said that we could restrict it.
Yeah, that's what Zach was talking about, this, the court case and.
Because we were not sure what, what the establishment was on.
Right. That would be like, it's going to be, you know, unfortunately, there are.
Their grandfather.
Hey, Rich, can I ask you a real quick question?
He survived.
He hit the nail right on the head. You guys aren't, you guys aren't the finest say. You could send it to the board to, to put a moratorium, suggest to the board, and vote on it, to put the moratorium into the board to make sure go, to only limit it to, you know, the, the, one, just one area, the industrial part. And then they can, by the time the next meeting comes, they will have it investigated and they can vote on it and shut it down. At least you get the ball rolled right here. Now, I mean, first thing I'm going to do is make sure, do the number one thing, put it industrial. You can do that right now, send it to them. It's not definite.
Zach, I got a question for you too. Now, it's industrial, not commercial, right?
You can slice and dice it how you want. I would say the reason why the communities I've worked with have wanted to put it industrial is because if you don't get the filters just right, it can be not pleasant. And so they wanted to limit it to the areas where there were other, less than pleasant potential things going on.
Okay. Thank you. So we can tell them that the Planning Commission supports the idea of looking at a moratorium until we can complete the final amendments to the caregiver portion of the ordinance?
Does that require a public hearing?
For, for amendment to a ordinance, yes.
Yeah, if we amend, we will have to. It sounds like we're going to.
Yep. Moratorium, again, the state doesn't really provide any clear guidance.
Yeah, but the amendment would.
Because a hundred and eighty days is plenty for us to get this done, right?
I think so.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we're not.
Yeah, if we're making it from scratch, it'd be more adventurous, but we're not.
Yeah, no, we, we, our ordinance is.
Obviously, it doesn't restrict the location, is what we're talking about, right? There is pretty good part of it. Anything else on that? Carry good with what we discussed under there, right? Anybody else can I say?
I have, that's pretty much what I want.
Yeah. For this meeting, I think that's accomplished what we wanted regarding the interactions.
So we'll go, I think you guys are all set.
Good.
Come on the party. So, all right, we'll move into the next gen item, call it public. Or please.
Scott, future, more like road public. You guys, you guys went ahead and voted on everyone, yes, the public, you know, we want to kind of be involved on all of them. Questionnaire, but I shouted out, I know you don't like that, but, "How about it's a nice place to raise your kids and have a family and retire here?" In that questionnaire, and one last one you guys are working on. I mean, you said friends and family, but like I said, everybody's been here, hollered. And we want to keep residential areas residential and places our kids could play and people to retire. And that's the number one thing for me. And I think a lot of people that were in here holler that. They're like, "Nice area, you know, you can drive through the junk if that and drive through the junk hard." And we got a little island of paradise here. People have said to me, I live on West Lake Road, just on east of Dent Hill. It's a nice road paved, and everybody keeps a law vote up. And it's such a nice, pretty road down through here.
Would you rate it as excellent?
Well.
We could drive over the road.
It's a pretty good shape, actually.
We paid ten thousand dollars each, as poverty owners pay for that.
Okay, we found, we found the one.
Yeah. We paid it along with the county.
You could add that, there's another, you could write in what you want, and you could.
No, what I'm saying is, the road was terrible, and Herb Park was down the road, and Oakland County uses the road, because they come out through expressway. You couldn't, you had, you were like this going through there. And it just happened, just probably moved in slightly, required the cost. But yeah, we paid the money. We, we, we did the vote. The other thing is, I formally put a complaint on Durocher. I don't know if you're familiar with it. Came in, filled out the paper with, with Ross. I know Ross is a busy man. And we definitely, from what I can see there, and we know already the violations that are there. I came by there, there's a car park in the mud in front of the house, just piled up in there. And it's, it's just piled up, and you look at the gate, and they're, and I can see they're not in compliance still. I mean, they came in here and asked, and they were told they were in violation. They have not, they've, they got business on top of business on top. They got more people in there working than one lot than anybody I can see. It's not just one person running a business there. We need to get in there. And I think we need to reject what they're approved for. I know Mark Beasley was on the board when they did that. I think we need to retract that and start over. I mean, they were here, they were told, they don't conform, and they aren't even trying to. I think we need to, we need to pull the rug out and say, "Start over." They haven't been there because they know they don't want to conform. We know, we've gone down that road with other people in this township. But it's a dump. I mean, you look, it's just rattly old hills in front of it, trying to cover everything up. It's a dump. I'm sorry, but I put the, I did, I did, I put the complaint.
So you filed a complaint?
I filed a complaint.
Well, that's what we need to have happen.
Okay. But I saw, other people said they did too, but I don't know what's connected. But I can't get in there. I don't need ecological, is one of the things too. There's those trailers without access underneath from the pods. Those aren't in our, I mean, there's, there's, there's mobile offices in there. Ross said, Mark, the other board, I wasn't there when they did that, they approved that. But I mean, there's multiple, I mean, you just look at that gate, nobody, it just looks like everything just up there. Do we, do we want a landfill there, a junkyard, an oil spill? I mean, Steve, Steve mentioned it too. You go Steve's facilities, they don't look like that. I mean, there's just too much going on in that one person. And I'm, I'm just afraid of a lethal, ecological problem. The tire, the truck, the stamp that was parked in the garage, tires were all piled up. Assessor has a picture of it. All the tires piled up, there are changes in tires in there. You look at the building, there's oil tanks, where there, there's one great big thing where they dumped the old oil up. So there's doing repair work in there. Indeed, I don't think they're approved for that. They're not probably licensed, they're, they're, I'm sure they're not regulated by the state like Woody's is here. And they're probably doing more oil changes and stuff like that than he is on those big rigs. Like I said, I think the door's open when you pull the rug out from them, because they haven't been formed. We already told them that. Last meeting again, I think it's time to just start over.
Well, you started the process.
Hey, I'm just, I'm just letting you know. But I mean, I'm not trying to say they shouldn't be a business. I think we just, we allow them to pull more in there than, but it needs to be in there. But like I said, when it started out, it didn't look that bad. But now there's just too many businesses operating in there.
Thanks. Thank you.
Janette, we had a foreword. I'm not aware of the situation that Scott spoke about, but I'd say it's something like that is going on in the community. It's a bad example or kind of a gateway for other businesses to be able to, you know, to tag along. So hopefully that will get looked after. Thank you for the discussion on the M M A, but I found it very interesting. And I do appreciate you guys all talking about it and bringing it to the attention. Please don't take this the wrong way, please. But nobody in this room is an expert on this. And I really ask, I, I compel you to watch the Zoom meeting of the, of the board meeting where the lawyer spoke. And I was doing FaceTime, so, you know, I'll give you access to that if you want it. But I would zoom in on our lawyer's body language. He was rolling his eyes the whole time she was speaking. I agree. Not every lawyer is going to agree or, you know, come to the same conclusions. But we need professional advice on this, I believe, and I would love to see her consulted. She's a really nice person. She, I believe, has worked on legislation, helping to write legislation, or at least putting it through the legal process. She really knows what she's doing. So I hope that you'll look at that. Um, and back to the survey, I'll actually have another question. I don't know how to get my answers, uh, my questions answered. I really don't. You guys say, "Send an email." So I understand that you were bombarded with a lot of emails, but it's been, I don't know, six weeks, a couple of months, and I still don't get any answers from anybody. What I'll do is I'll just start fresh. I'll try and shorten it down. I try to include information that I know, so you can look at and say, "Okay, this is where she's coming from." But I can make them shorter, but I, you know, I don't know how to get, if I can't get a question answered here, and you guys say, "Send an email," but I still don't hear from anybody, I don't know. Should I call and ask for a meeting? Would that be possible? I don't know what to do.
Well, your questions, when you have them, are directed to Rich.
And all the planning questions.
We have all to.
Yeah, and he sends them all to you. So it's to all of you. But I, I direct it to Rich, because I, I assume that he's the one that distributes them. Anyway. The one thing, and I know the survey's done now, or it seems to be done, but I would just reiterate for the record, I'm really disappointed that we have that question on there that is pulling everybody, children under eighteen years old and people that don't own property. I really don't think it's fair. There was a precedent, if, if there was another precedent sent, I accept, I'm not aware of it. But the last time the township did a survey, um, the township was adamant that it had to go to property owners only. This master plan has potential to affect all taxpayers. And so I, I, again, I really don't think it's fair, and I don't know how, if there's a resolution or if there's a rule, or how do you guys decide which surveys go to the whole population? Everybody under age, you don't have to keep track, or you have to have them stamped with a, you know, a number so we can see exactly how many people. I know one person, her survey got lost, and she tried to get another one and was told, "Sorry," for the township. "Sorry, it's done, we can't get another one." And she spoke at one of the meetings and asked why she couldn't, and they said their number. So why is this different, is, is what I'm asking. So again, I'm going to say it again, I do appreciate everything you guys do. I'm here to help, I'm here to help our community better, and I just have a lot of unanswered questions, and I just wish that I could get answers to a lot of them.
Thank you.
Can you get Callahan? Scott was talking about the business down here, I do, through the woods from them. I've heard their tailgates dumped in as late as midnight, and I have not said anything about it, and I probably should have. I don't know what their hours of operation are, you know? They're not, they're not farmers, so it's not twenty-four hours. But I think that's something that needs to be looked into, because that, that might be late. And it's loud enough to where my wife thought she heard the explosion down the road today. And I think it was just a tailgate banging. It goes through the woods, you know what I mean? We're half a mile away to the west, so that issue. The other thing is, is marijuana. Why is it all right to have this where you got a, a school bus stop within less than a hundred yards? You know, why, why hasn't somebody ever thought of that? Our children, children are impressionable. We all learned that in school, right or wrong, okay? And now you're going to have them down there next to a place that grows the damn stuff, and there's still two fans blowing out of there, all right, on the west side of that building? You know, I have access to get there, and you guys might do too, if you just talk to Gayda Daisy. You can see it all, and it's wrong. I don't want it there, something's got to happen. And I'm realizing some instances, you've got, your hands tied. But Denise that was here, you know, I'll give you her number and stuff if that's what you need. She is, is very sharp on this. She's in Howell. She helped write most of the stuff. And she can help you guys a lot. Yeah, we got to spend some money, it's either that or a lawsuit. You know, it's your choice. Our choice, I guess, really, if I could understand. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Room? Hands? Some lady's business, and we'll try to speak a little bit, our ordinance. That's, I think, the intent of the ordinance where it talks about, where it has, cannot have an appearance of a facility that grows marijuana, that's the intent, because you never know where a bus stop's going to be or not going to be, those things. I know in my instance, there wasn't one within a half mile where I moved to, and I had children. So they made one at the end of my driveway, so it's, it's hard to predict all that. Kind of why the other one says that it can't have an appearance of, but understand the concerns for sure. Totally understand it. But there is, um, yeah, I don't know. Janette, you had a lot of questions.
I'll send it to you.
Summarize it right now, I can't off the top of my head answer them all, but.
I'll send it to you, Janette.
Do the best I can.
We send them, I send them to her, my ideas, and she'll send them to you, it's for the whole board. We go through Rich.
Then, um, for Ross, is, is there any other items that, I know we were, we've been talking about sightlines in the last meeting. Ross is gathering a bunch of data. He got one example for us of all the setbacks around the lake. He's going to give us that for all lakes for our next time we talk about it. I don't think there's anything else. Let's have something. To the German, some Ouija. Meeting in the German.
I'm saying Chris. How's the weather? I got the boat outside, and I'll borrow it to go fishing.